Ladies and gentlemen, can we stand for the pledge, please?
A diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Okay, we have some special people here tonight, Joe, under the report of the chair. We have the recognition you want to talk about?
We do, we have two groups of students that we'd like to recognize tonight. First, I'd like to start by asking the recipients of our Scholastic Art and Writing Awards to come up with their artwork to be recognized. So if those four students, hopefully they're here. If you guys come on up. And if you guys could stand next to your, stand next to your pieces there. We're missing one. Luckily, that was your piece. So this Scholastic Art and Writing Awards are presented by the Alliance of Young Artists and Writers. It's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization whose mission is to identify students with exceptional artistic and literary talent and present their remarkable work to the world through the, through these awards. In 2024, more than 110,000 teens from across the U.S. and Canada entered more than 340,000 original works in 28 different categories of art and writing. These pieces were on display from January 13th to the 31st in the Silpee Gallery at Hartford Art School. The Connecticut Regional Celebration and Awards Presentation was held on January 26th at the Lincoln Theater at the University of Hartford. So just so I can share and make sure we can couple everybody up. Receiving Honorable Mention Award with sophomore Agent Kronk for his micro pens drawing of importance, abhorrence, eyeball tickler now in 2D.
You want to do one at a time, Joe?
Sure, sure.
I'm gonna give you that one.
Senior Casey Cummings received a Silver Key for acrylic paint piece for What Lies Beneath. And I'm assuming Kira is absent because that looks like a self-portrait there, right? So Junior Olivia Neal also Silver Key for self-portrait in charcoal. And finally, soph- Kira, I'm sorry, sophomore Kira Rowley, who's not here, for the colored pencils piece, The Center Flame. So congratulations to all of our Scholastic Arts. Yeah, you can come on up. Very nice, congratulations, beautiful work. So congratulations to those students. I'm gonna ask Steve Swenson to introduce our National Merit Committed Students and semifinalists and finalists.
Are they coming up on?
No, come up, they can, you can name them all and they can all come up.
Sure. So let me give you just a little bit about the National Merit Scholar, Committed Students, semifinalists, and finalists, just so you get a frame of reference for what it means. So roughly 1.5 million entrants take the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, and 50,000 of the top scorers qualify for recognition in the National Merit Scholarship Program. In September, the students with high scores are notified through their schools that they've qualified either as a commended student or a semifinalist. About 2/3 of the high scorers on that test receive letters of commendation in recognition of their academic promise. Commended students make up approximately 5% of the top scorers. And although commended students do not continue in the competition for the National Merit Scholarships, some of the students do become candidates for special scholarships sponsored by corporations and businesses. So these students are still in the top 5% of all PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Tests across the country. We have five students who met that recognition level. Tyler Behringer, Evan Boyle, Emma Hannan, Laura Mekew, and Arik Ramen.
If the commended students can come up?
Committed students, come on. So semifinalists are chosen state by state based to ensuring equal representation across the country. Semifinalists are part of the top 16,000 scorers across the country on the PSAT NMSQT. That way I don't have to say the whole thing anymore. To become a semifinalist, the students must meet state-specific score cutoffs, which usually means they're in the top 1% to 2% of PSAT takers in Connecticut. Semifinalists can submit an application to become a finalist. Of those semifinalists who submit applications, about half of them will receive a National Merit Scholarship in March. In addition to their PSAT scores, candidates are evaluated on their abilities, skills, and accomplishments based on materials like academic recognition, academic records, written recommendations, and essays. Massey's National Merit Scholarship semifinalists, who have met the requirements to advance now to be finalists in the competition, are Shivani Anand and Sawyer Judge.
Thank you, everyone. Feel free to go. You can stay if you want, but you won't hurt our feelings if you don't stay for the whole meeting. Unless you want to write a report on it tomorrow. Do we have any sign-ups other than the one that canceled? Okay. I'm gonna move forward to public participation. Is anyone here for public participation at all? Anyone here for public participation? Thank you. Hearing none, I'm gonna move forward to the consent agenda. Any board members have any questions on the minutes from last meeting? Any board members have any questions on the warrants and wires at all? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Dennis seconded by Jerry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much, motion passes. We're gonna go to the reports of the committees. We're gonna start with our students, go right ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I hope we're all having a marvelous Monday. I want to begin today's address by shouting out the prom fashion show. This event is Massey's biggest fundraiser of the year, and every dollar raised goes straight to the funding for the pro-post-prom celebration. Tickets for the event will be going live March 12th, but if you wanted to help out ahead of time, the PTC is accepting donations. Please reach out for more details. As a model in the show, I'm excited to wow you guys on the runway in the coming weeks.
It's terrific Tuesday.
Oh, right.
Congratulations to seniors Emma Hannam and Evan Boyle, who actually just got recognized, I hope they're still there, for their selection as candidates for the United States Department of Education's Presidential Scholars Program, which awards a select few students from throughout the nation for their academic excellence. Emma and Evan will submit an application to compete to be two of the 161 scholars selected nationwide. We congratulate them again and wish them good luck.
Today, juniors had the opportunity to listen to a presentation by Stephen Hill, a recovering addict who spoke about his struggle and experience with alcoholism and drug abuse in his recovery process. After, students had the opportunity to ask questions, and many stayed after the presentation to talk with the speaker more. Overall, I found the presentation to be a positive experience, and there was heavy participation among students. And for our sports report, in boys' basketball, the regular season concluded with a win against Shelton. The Panthers will travel and play against Weston in the quarterfinals tomorrow night. In girls' basketball, the regular season was concluded with a win over Weston. Tomorrow night, they will play Bethel in the quarterfinals. In boys' hockey, they have a recent win against Trumbull and lost against Amity. They have upcoming games against Staples and Immaculate later this week. In a boys' swim, they have a recent win against Pinellas and an upcoming meet against Trumbull on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any board members have any committee reports?
No.
We'll be voting for policies.
Okay, then we are gonna move on to the report.
Chrissy and I went to a special ed event.
Oh, that's right.
In Bridgeport. Some of the legislators wanted to hear concerns.
Wow, you had nothing to say.
I may have spoken twice when you were only supposed to say.
Yeah, Chrissy spoke twice.
I know, that's shocking to all of you.
Okay.
It was, it was kinda interesting. It didn't really seem that many board members were there from other towns. I think it was Chrissy and I were the only ones that spoke, and another retired board member spoke. But there was some, like, union representation there, just talking about how the towns can't afford it anymore.
A lot of talk about excess costs.
Yeah, excess costs. Like I obviously mentioned, you know, the unfunded mandates. I'm like, you know, you guys are burying us with unfunded mandates, and then you turn around and say, we're gonna fund you at 60%. And I also mentioned, what shall we call it, the burden of proof, which they don't want to hear, but I'm gonna say it anyways. Because one of four states, and I said burden of proof is killing us, killing Connecticut with the legal fees.
Yeah, agree.
Stuff like that, and, oh, Chrissy, you spoke twice, so.
No, like I said, mostly, a lot of them, you know, the conversation centered around funding and/or the lack thereof. I think that was the theme. And many people who spoke said, you know, you're in a room with board members, lawyers, advocates, parents, teachers, and when we're all agreeing on something, you know, you need to listen.
That's an issue, yeah.
I think the panel seemed to be listening. I don't, I don't know how much say they really will have in the end, but I think they're leaning towards changing the threshold for in-district kids to 3% instead of 4.5%, which may help a little bit, but it depends on if you submit for in-district kids or not.
Yeah.
It may be compelling, though, to start submitting if you don't.
Any, any response from the state committing to 100% and only paying 60% and having excessive costs?
No.
No, they just.
They don't know how much money they're gonna get, is what I'm hearing.
I mean, the guy called me back after I spoke, and he just said, oh, yeah, you're right, we need to listen more about unfunded mandates. I'm like, well, what are you gonna do about it? It's like, I told him, I go, you know, we asked our superintendent to get us a list of unfunded mandates, not just in special ed, but education in general. I said, it was like 50, 60 pages. And I said, and then you guys turn around and say, well, we buried you in unfunded mandates, but we're only gonna give you 60%. It's like, oh, that's nice. And they don't even want to hear burden of proof, it's like.
They shut you down.
Couple that with the mandatory reassessment of housing, and you just kill the town.
Yeah. They don't care. I, I, I mean, I don't know. I mean, they seem to listen, like Chrissy said, but in general.
Our state rep is actually chairing the committee, Sujada.
The Special Education Task Force?
She is, yeah, the task force, yeah.
Good. Well, thank you for representing our opinions. We all agree with what you said, and that's very important. And the governor's proposed budget, I don't know, Ron, did, or Joe, do you see that too? There's reductions for Monroe in that over the next two years, too? Yeah.
Well, the ECS, yeah.
Yeah, so we're looking at worse news rather than better, so. All right, well, thank you. Anything else on committees? No? Okay. Thank you. Joe reported, the superintendent?
Sure, before I turn it over to Ron for the, the review of the fund activity statement, and I didn't put this down, but, excuse me, Sheila wanted me to just ask if we had any volunteers for the calendar committee. I think someone couldn't do it, that was the original to do it. The calendar committee's meeting February 27th.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday at 4:00, and that's to come up with the '26-'27 calendar. So we're trying to always stay two years out, tell staff and families' plan for, for the years ahead.
Propagations and all that.
Yeah, '25-'26 is already done, so this will just be doing the '26-'27.
Did you just do that last time?
I did it.
You did it?
Four or five. Four or five. I did it last time.
Oh, I could, do you wanna do it?
I did it last time.
I don't mind doing it.
It was me, Joe, I couldn't do it anymore. I'm the one.
Oh, I, I forgot.
I don't mind doing it, yeah.
It's for a good reason, though.
Yeah.
I'll do it. It's here?
It's at Central Ops.
Central Ops.
Bring a lot of coffee.
A lot of coffee.
It's not too.
We're not doing negotiations.
No, it was easy.
Yeah.
Pay on contract.
Did I mention I'm off this week?
Oh, we've got lots to do.
Rest up for next, this is next Thursday.
I know, I was just saying, I'm gonna be pushing for that in the calendar.
Thank you for, thank you. If anyone has anything for Ron on the fund activity statement, or if Ron, if you want to make any general statements.
Yeah, there's a, a couple of object codes I wanted to point out that are running a little hot, so I'll be taking a deeper dive into those over the next couple of weeks. I'll be setting up a meeting with Dan to discuss them, because one's disposal services, 754210. The second one, that's running over, but was anticipated that we probably would, because we cut the budget down to 20,000, was emergency repairs, so. And the idea was, if we couldn't cover it in the budget, we would use revenue funds to cover that, so it's, it's, I guess we kinda get the worst of both worlds. We, that particular line, we've had more emergency repairs this year than we've had in the past, so. And the third object code, 756220, electricity, is running pretty hot right now, so I'm gonna come up with a game plan to cover that, because we will be going over in that this year.
Dennis, go ahead.
171066, the 41,000, is there a specific item that that was for?
Which?
Under A&amp;R mechanical.
That was the boiler.
Emergency repair.
Oh, you're talking the warrants?
Boiler.
Yeah, it was probably.
41,000, the boiler.
Any other questions for Ron at all?
Just one, because I think it's the way I'm reading it, Eversource. It looks like 7062, and warrants, 7062, like, listed twice. So I think maybe the second one just came, the one's 327,404, and then comes up with.
What page, John?
Sorry, I don't have the page in front of me. 7062 to 7066. Eversource, basically, I forget what page it's on.
Yeah, I got it, it's on page 10. So what was the?
Yeah, 7062 is listed twice on there, and so 7066 and 7064, one's 323,404, and then there's 41,36. I think it's just a roll-up issue, but I just wanted.
I think it's just the totals.
Yeah, the total, just added twice, you know, it's not added twice, but listed twice. There's three of them that are duplicate.
Things are on the wires.
On the wires, right.
It lists them twice. You're talking 706?
7062.
Oh, that's just the, the, so 7062, that's just the vendor number?
It was a ti, yeah, it was just, it's Eversource, but there's three of, three of them that are listed two times, and I just wonder whether it's just a roll-up of different amounts?
That it's not a duplicate, you mean?
No, it's not, yeah, no, it's not a duplicate, there are separate invoices being paid on.
Different types?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. I mean, it is what it is, whatever sources are hit.
Anything else for Ron? No? Okay.
I just wanted to give an update on the Ad Hoc Facilities Committee that met last Wednesday night. The committee's looked at a number of different configurations, and currently sit at two at this time that are, that are most appealing to the committee, just to keep everyone up to date. And I, first of all, I apologize, I didn't put, I didn't send out a weekend review, I just realized that today when I went to go start next week's weekend review, so I apologize, because I would've, I would've put this on the weekend review. The two scenarios right now that appear to be the most appealing to the committee, and again, we have a long way to go, is the reconfiguration that we, that existed prior to 2013, which was, you know, our elementary schools up to grade four, Chalk Hill 56, and then, you know, 78 at Jackie Hollow, 912 at Massey. The other one that was talked about was a Font Hollow and Stepney, both as K3 buildings, Chalk Hill has a 46 building, and then Jackie Hollow, 78, Massey, 912, with a specialized Monroe Elementary where, you know, you would house central office pre-K, a therapeutic day program, alternative, things of that nature. I know there's been some, I'm not on social media anymore, I quit. I know there's been some chatter in the community, I know some people brought it to me, I just, I can't stress enough how important it is to realize that we're just in the beginning of this stuff. There's no decisions that are made. The 16 to 18 people that are at those meetings are not making the decision for the town. This is gonna be something that, you know, will go to, you know, we're gonna get feedback from staff, we're gonna go to the other boards in town, the first selectmen's office, and most importantly, the townspeople, too. We want to hear from all those people before any kind of a decision's made. So I think sometimes things are put out there, and people think, okay, this is the one of the two things that we're doing, and, you know, we're, you know, this is, we're talking years away, and, but that's where we sit right now, so I just want to make sure that's clear and on the record.
Correct, these are preliminary concepts.
Yeah.
And that's all it is, they could change every meeting. So people need to relax and calm down, I'll be the one to say it bluntly. Again, these are preliminary concepts. The committee is looking at, it has to go through, you know, the full board, it has to go through the town, we're gonna ask for public participation in this, and it could change meeting by meeting, so it's not over till it's over, and that's probably a year process, so. I would ask for everyone's patience with that, too. We will ask for public input, but it has a long way to go, so.
Thanks.
But the work of the committee, the work that the committee's doing has been phenomenal, really diving into every little nook and cranny, so, and that'll all be explained. So, agree, Joe?
And then finally, just a budget update. I'm sure, you know, this board's familiar already that we had an adjustment of $1.85 million made by the first selectmen. The budget now sits with town council, who can make adjustments to the town departments, but not the Board of Education budget, before they present it to the Board of Finance on March 15th. Board of Finance, as you know, can make adjustments to both the town side and the Board of Ed side before turning it back over to the first selectmen, and then the townspeople for referendum that first Tuesday in May. We've done some preliminary work on mitigating the $1.85 million adjustment. That adjustment was just made a little over a week ago. We're still waiting, you know, on solid insurance numbers to come in, so it's a little bit premature for us to finalize any mitigation strategies at this time, but I can assure you that we're working on them, we're working on them. It'll be part of our conversation at this Thursday's admin meeting as well. As always, you know, we will try to, you know, make any adjustments have as minimal impact on kids as possible, so, just so all of the people know that's where we are with that.
Wouldn't a cut that size mean, like, reductions in staff and?
Without any other thing?
Programs?
I think we'd be looking at staff, yeah, reductions and impacts to programming, for sure.
That's another thing, too, that I'd like to ask for everybody's patience. It's not over until it's over. Town council has to look at it, Board of Finance has to look at it, and our big issue is that we won't know those insurance numbers until late March, April, right, Steve? The insurance numbers coming in, so, you know.
I think early March.
Early March?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be even better. And we hope they come under the 12% that we budgeted, but we've been given an 11 to 13. A 13 would be really bad, but then when we have the actual facts and the numbers, then we'll, we'll go to Board of Finance and talk to them about, you know, obtaining any funds back, or how they would like to handle that, but I would like to see the funds come back. I'll say it right now. Hopefully, we can find a way to do that and have a very little impact to the classroom. But right now, again, I'm not gonna, I'm concerned, but I'm not in panic mode yet, so let's just let it play out. So I would ask for that, everybody to be patient as well with that, so. Thank you, Joe.
Sure.
Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, we're gonna move to unfinished business, curriculum and resource review. We had a curriculum proposal and materials to look at. Any preliminary discussion on that at all? I think it was very well presented and very well received by all of us, right? Okay, with that being said, can I have a motion to approve for course titled Bookworms, K to 5, Reading and Writing, and the needed instructional materials and resources as presented? Christine, segmented by Dennis. I'll get you next time, Jerry. Any further discussion on that?
I would just, the motion to approve for resource title, it's not a, it's not a course.
Okay. So noted. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, motion passes, thank you very much. Gonna move on to new business policies, first review. Christine?
So the first review is for personal certified, non-certified, Title IX revised policy, with the January 9th Kentucky Federal Court putting a stop to the 2024 Title IX regulations and making all states go back to 2020 regulations. So we had to reverse our policy back to 2020 from the one we approved, I think, no founding?
So this is the policy right before?
Correct. So that's, we had to. We just did it, yeah, so it's just flipped.
Yep. Is that being appealed? Do you know? Do we know? Sheila, anything? No? Just where it stands now?
Where it stands right now.
Okay. Okay.
What was taken out?
They totally reversed it from the.
The change that we just.
Any of the changes that were made in the 2024 regulations and gone back to the 2020.
Yep.
Christine, same with number two?
And the other, number two is just updating our Family Medical Leave Act policy to the latest laws and to our practice of using an online application. These are just first review, though, right? These are first review, yeah. We vote next meeting.
They were, they were many pages.
Many, many pages.
Yes, many pages to read on that one, and there was no red lines to just jump through, it was, it was all, yeah, all new. So this is first review, we'll vote on it next meeting, we'll put it on the agenda. Any further discussion on that, or questions? No? Okay, we have a curriculum first review, Joe?
We do, I have, we both have, we have both a curriculum and a resource review tonight, the first review. The first is, I think you're gonna like both the curriculum and the resource, and I think you're gonna like the price, you do that.
Come on up.
So before we start, this is Mike Circone. Mike is a CTE teacher for us, he also does a lot of work at some of our community colleges, teaches our CAD programs, good, that's working. And Mike is here to present CAD 2300, parametric 3D CAD using NX.
All right, so this course is a class that's run through the state of Connecticut, through the community college system, that I'm teaching through that, and I'm proposing that we run this course here at Massey High School. The course would receive college accreditation, not college accreditation, they would receive credit through the community college system as well for this.
I'll move on.
So NX is, it's a CAD software, it's a parametric-based program, it's used by companies like Electric Boat, Skorsky, I know, use a little with it, there's, there's many CAD software out there, but this is one that's becoming very popular with industry in the area, and there's been grants put out to fund this program within schools, so. And there's been grants put out to fund this program within schools, so we already have it installed on the machines here. It's completely free, no cost. And what I'm looking for is 20 hours to write the curriculum for this. I have a lot of it kind of already figured out. I know exactly what I'm going to do, and it's going to align exactly with the state curriculum, as I mentioned before, just because for them to receive the credit through the state, it has to be the same exact curriculum. This would provide students with this 3D parametric design. The concept is that they could create a design, make it look like whatever they want. I know when I presented this before, I said, like, a water bottle over here. I might sketch out and design the water bottle to look like exactly what it's supposed to, but at any time, I could go back and make modifications to it, and the part's going to fully adapt. So, that's what this parametric concept is. My goal is to have this go in line with the other CAD courses. Currently, Massey has three that are in line with the state. This would be the fourth one. They're all half-year, and this would just be building off of those. Talking about this, it's critical thinking, real-world problem design, just talked about the water bottle there. I think that's something really basic, but everyone's got one around them right now. So, it's kind of something that we need. With the communication, they make these technical drawings. They're professional, like blueprints, what you think of when you see a floor plan for a home. Well, we have these technical drawings, too. There needs to be a way to properly present that water bottle just on a sheet of paper to show whoever's going to go make it, because someone who's on the floor actually designing, building this part, probably not talking to the person who's actually designing it on the computer. They're taking it. So, they need to learn how to properly take this and showcase their work one way. So, there's, there's communication with it, plenty of curiosity. Walk into my room at any time, they are designing, modeling, 3D printing, whatever they come up with there. Some of them run their own show in there. Empathy, compassion, you know, design for users' needs, social, emotional readiness, build resilience, set goals, so on. Right now, I don't know of any high schools currently using NX. I'm sure there are. I don't know of any within the area. Out of all the people I've spoken to, colleagues, no one has it. Usually, most schools are just running AutoCAD, SolidWorks, or Inventor, which are kind of like the big three that I can name right off. So, this would just be another one out there, but we need to prepare people for all of the jobs that are getting created in companies like Electric Boat, using them as an example. They hire probably 5,000 people a year. They need to take them in and know how to use the software, so this is helping prepare them to get in there. Here are the units of study. I'm going to focus it very similar to the MFG 1010 class that I run, which is basically using SolidWorks. And it would kind of follow the same steps. You learn how to use the program, learn how to present your work, 3D print, make models, learn all the problem solving that goes into this, so they're comfortable when they leave here, they could sit down and you could put just about anything in front of them, and they should know how to recreate exactly what's in front of them to look exactly like what they have. There is no cost. It is completely free. We already have the software installed on the machines. As for paying for it to write the curriculum through the Perkins Grant, we've, Phil McDonough has, who runs the Perkins Grant here, he has already put in to fund this completely. It was approved through Perkins. So, there is no cost for curriculum writing at all. There's no cost for the software. It's just me sitting down and getting to work and actually getting the curriculum out there to what Monroe has. And I think that's my entire presentation. Any questions for me?
I have one.
Yes?
I know a fair amount of industries using Siemens NX. Now, the software runs from $1,700 to like $8,900. Which, are you getting a basic level of Siemens NX?
We're getting the education version, so it doesn't have all that goes with it. Like, I could probably do some analysis on parts, very basic things, like I designed the bottle and then applied basically stresses to it to see how it's going to hold up, but not too much more. I know it's not coming with the, like, the CNC version.
You know, I make the arms?
Yeah. We're getting the, not the bare bones, because there's plenty. I mean, I could write this class and multiple classes to go off of what they're providing us with, but it's great for this level to prepare them for what's out there.
And Mike, you were saying this is used in industry, you know, in places like Electric Boat, Sikorsky.
It's all over.
And Mike, I don't think, did you mention that, Christian Council? You're already teaching this course this coming, this spring or this summer?
This summer. It's running for the first time that I know of through the community college system, running it as an online course, just to see how it runs, and then it's going to be going hopefully every semester after that.
So, I'll say it because I know he won't. We're very lucky, and Mike is a prodigy here with the CAD. Mike is known around the state for his CAD work. He is, this is a great program, it's no cost, and what he goes with his kids are incredible.
Thank you.
Is it for this coming September?
So, it, I know that it was in course selections for students to take, but there's a couple prereqs required, so the numbers would probably be pretty small this year for it, but hope that it would grow, especially when students find out it's free college credit.
Yeah.
Are there any...
Yeah.
Clearly, there should be, right? A lot of companies are looking for this type of work, right? You got Netronic, you got a lot of people in state that actually do this. So, is there any ties that we can get to instantly jump a career when people leave here?
I'm hoping to have a generic CAD certificate that the state offers. There are four classes, I believe, that are required to get that CAD certificate, and it would just, after they were to take all four of those classes and I get this approved through the state, the students would be able to leave here with that CAD certificate. It basically just says that they, you know, they're proficient in CAD language, whatever they're going to sit down with it. They've never played with Inventor before, they'll probably be able to sit down and pick it up 1, 2, 3, because they were able to get through all the others. That's the hope. That's for next year, though.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Good work.
That's Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'd like to bring up Lenny Retignano, our instructional leader for English Language Arts, 712. Lenny is going to talk a little bit about a new creative writing text.
Good evening, everybody. So, as Joe said, I am asking for this text, which we'll talk about. Our creative writing course is a senior elective. It's currently a half-credit. Often, our seniors will take, if they're not taking AP Literature or UConn class, which are year-long courses, they're taking two-half electives. And so, this happens to be one of our most popular ones, which is why we took an extra look at it. It seems to be increasing more, so we want our students to be able to take advantage of their interests. And so, in that case, we wanted to take another look at it to ensure that it's meeting the expectations that we wanted to for such a popular class. And so, we think with adding the text, it's going to increase some of the rigor of that course beyond just the workshop model that we currently have with it. This particular text was chosen because it has a combination of three aspects that are important in creative writing. It takes the students through this idea of process, so what you would imagine of a creative writing class in terms of the writing process, you know, planning, drafting, all of that. The second thing it takes a look at is craft, so it takes a deep dive into things like characterization and point of view, obviously at a higher level than would be in a regular, just LA class, for instance. And then finally, it is an anthology, so that provides master texts, is what they're calling them. And so, you can see a lot of the, what they're talking about in the craft, in particular stories or particular articles, and then discuss and then apply it in their own writing. It does also combine fiction and nonfiction, which, as I'll mention in a second, a lot of college courses that we looked at. So, for instance, we looked at UConn, we looked at CCSU, we looked at Southern, we look at Western. Some of them focused, I believe it was, it's hard to see if they're, I think it was UConn and Southern really focused on the poetry aspect in the course. And then CCSU and Western took, like, excerpts, so none of them really had a text that spoke as well as this one does to our particular needs, because, as I said, it is a course that kids are interested in, and some like nonfiction more than fiction, and some like poetry, and some like writing novels. And so, we wanted to make sure that this is truly representative of all the kids that we have because it's so popular. So, we didn't want to limit that in looking at the options. And so, as I said, this particular text combines those three elements. It gets at the nature of the course that we currently have, but also what we'd like it to be based on what we're hearing from the kids. And obviously, WW Norton, that's a reputable publisher, so it, you know, it works in this case. As Joe said, it's not going to be a cost to the district, so that's good. It's on a grant. I did include the pricing there. We are looking, as I said, because it's so popular for, enough for four classes, and